Up there eager and ready to go.
Yeah. I see my engineer.
You're number two.
I don't want to have to present myself.
You're number two, son. You better be ready.
I don't know. I wouldn't promise that.
If you would, we're gonna go ahead and stand and say the pledge and invocation, then we'll get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings. We thank you for each one who's here tonight, Lord. We thank you for our county and what it means to us. And we ask now, as we conduct your business, that you help us, Lord, to do it in a manner that's pleasing to you and in the best interest of our citizens. I mean, I say these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. You will open the meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Commissioners, if you have a chance to review.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't think we have any announcements, Mr. Chairman, Matt Carpenter from the planning department. We've got three legislative items in the first part of the agenda. The very first one of those is the substantially revised Chapter 5 of the Land Development Code. And I'm gonna ask Kristen to come and introduce that one for us.
Before we get started, real quick, you go first, Kristen. As a matter of housekeeping, just remind everybody, if you haven't already done so, please either silence or turn off your cell phones, where we can minimize distractions. Also, I'd like to ask everybody, if you do get up to speak on an item, to please try to limit your comments to three minutes, where we can move through the agenda as quickly as possible, giving everybody the opportunity to speak. And we wanna let everybody speak if they would like to. Karen? I mean, Kristen?
Good evening. So we have Chapter 5 back tonight. You guys had an opportunity to see this at the last meeting. We have done some revisions in the past month, and I'd like to brief you on what those are and see if you have any comments or concerns. And I'll try to move through quickly. I do have, if we wanna get into this, and I'll let you decide, a discussion about building massing. And I have some graphics and presentation form that we can go to if we need to later. If not, then we won't do it. Okay. The first change that I wanna draw your attention to, and everybody has gotten this kind of a cheat sheet that's in your packet, and this really highlights what's substantive, because I know that this is a 130-page document, and that's hard to get through. So I went ahead and prepared this summary of what's really substantive, so that you'd have a good understanding and be able to discuss. And the first change there deals with increased compatibility in South Walton. And this is on page 2 of your draft at Section 5.00.03. And it's kinda combined with, if you look at item number 5, also, that talks about height limit and setback inconsistencies. And this is, we had, we have a setback requirement based on height of structure in the code currently. And you can see, it's the stricken language here under item number 1, that basically all structures over four stories, you're to increase the side rear and front setback by two feet for every story over four stories, up to a maximum of 40. And this is stricken because some new language was added, dealing with South Walton and as well dealing with North Walton, because we had an incon- there was actually a pretty significant inconsistency between this language and the setback language that was related to North Walton. And that's under item number 6. And I'm sorry for the tracking issue, but we'll have to try to get to that. So we did add a different setback for South Walton for every, a half foot for every foot over 36 feet. So what that does is makes that additional setback more accessible for the development that we're seeing. So that is one change there that's geared at, and this is really not geared at incompatibilities between single family. And I'm, in this context, I'm calling large rental homes, short-term rentals, single family, in this context. That does not address those. This is an additional setback. This is like in the VMU situation, where you're having a single-use non-residential or a single-use multifamily residential going in next to existing single-family structures.
So the setbacks are, will be more in the future, or if we pass it?
It's more accessible becau- it's a lesser increase, but it's more accessible because the height has dropped down to something more like what we see, to three-story building. So whereas before, I mean, we really don't get a lot over four stories, you know, with the 50-foot height limit.
I suppose, like, you can't have that anyways, really. Or it'd be difficult.
Yeah. So, but it's not as great of a setback increase. So it's kind of a push one way and a pull the other way, if that makes sense. If you look at item number 5, this gets into where that was inconsistent in North Walton, where we have, in North Walton, for multifamily residential development, a 75-foot height limit established that comes along with an increased setback of 1.25 times. So that was, that is not the same as the two-foot over four, which would have been a huge problem for us if we would've got a development in that area that was wanting to be at that height, which may happen in the near future. So we needed to fix that inconsistency. And one thing to point out, too, here, is that we have removed the front setback from these increases, because that really actually can result in building design that's less desirable. You don't always want to increase the front setback and sort of push that structure back into the residential sort of line that it's in. And sometimes you may want that building up to the street to accommodate parking in a better way. So having that increased setback for compatibility purposes on these developments may result in the opposite. So that's really been, that's been removed. So it's really the side and the rear that we're dealing with. Okay? So the other change there is for North Walton, you know, in order to deal with that inconsistency, we've got one-half foot for each one foot increase in building height above 50 feet. So from that increment, from 50 to 75, you would have that increased setback. And that's only for multifamily residential. And it's only in cases where it's next to existing I think we talked about the family homestead change last week. That's, I don't know if anybody had any questions there. These other ones, we talked about last week, so I'm not gonna go through again unless you want me to. The incentive for not doing online preservation, where they can have relief from their setback if they back up to a large preservation area, that's kind of a trade-off for us, really not wanting them to do that online preservation in the future. Back to number 6, family homestead. So we removed the requirement for that to be actually homesteaded by the person who gives the part, the smaller parcel to the family member. That's consistent with Florida statute. So that's why we made that change. In the buffering section, there is, there, you'll see a lot of added, there's a big table that's been added in there that establishes buffers. It's been our practice to consider the adjoining land use when you're dealing with a new development, even if that land use is vacant. In practice, we look at the land use category, and we assign a buffer based on what that could be. That really wasn't codified, now it is. So, and it's codified in a different way than if you were to have an existing land use next to an existing land use. If, in this new code, if your property adjacent is vacant, then you're going to have more options in terms of what you can do with the buffer, because the assumption is that when the adjoining property develops, they share that buffer width.
Okay.
Which is a different situation than when you have, say, a single family that doesn't have a buffer at all, and a new development's coming in next door. There's an assumption there that the new development has more of a burden in terms of the buffer width. We did talk about the parking maximum for short-term rentals. That is, that is still here. And I've got kind of a picture I wanted to pass around to you on this. And I've got some more pictures in here, if we wanna get into this discussion about the short-term vacation rental massing. But this, if you wanna just pass this around, what it is, is this is a Greaton Beach house. And Greaton Beach has parking assigned by square footage. So their neighborhood plan establishes a parking, minimum parking requirement based on square footage of the building. And this is kind of the result of that. So I wanted you to see kind of what that, what that looks like on paper. And these are the kinds of things that we see, so it can help in your decision-making process. It's basically wall-to-wall. The site is built wall-to-wall.
And that's because of the minimum.
Yes. And the yellow area is parking, the yellow. And that gets into, you know, the setback encroachment that we talked about last week, of kind of limiting that down to 20% of the total yard. Because if you're struggling with the kind of cramped-in look, and that's not what the community desires, and that's not, that's not what we wanna continue doing, that's one way to address that, is to look at what's going in those yards.
I think even with the maximum, though, it's still going to be an enforcement issue, is what it's gonna be.
Absolutely. Yes. And that remains to be resolved. And I think, you know, if the direction is to move forward with that, we have a lot of work to do to see if that's gonna work. And it may not. And if it doesn't work, then we're gonna have to come back and rethink it.
But you think the, in your opinion, this would, this combined with the setbacks and is, is at least putting us towards the?
I think that, that is, that is a minimal approach. So I'll tell you that. I mean, that is, that is an approach that is, you're not going to really address the mass of the building itself under those two options, but you are going to address kind of the feel of open space around these buildings.
So on this drawing, all these?
It's all park.
All park. It's, basically, the setbacks are all taken up with parking.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, the entire site is maximized.
So wouldn't it, is there any way to combine the parking in with the, with this total structure with that?
Yeah. And you mean, like, underneath, or?
Either underneath, or garage, or impervious parking area that's included in the?
Most of them do have some garage parking or understructure parking. And even with that, they need more. And the only issue, and we can look at some of these pictures, is what will you have to be careful with in South Walton, is that if we look at far, or we look at site coverage or lot coverage ratios, we don't wanna wind up with towerhouses. And that is a real possibility. And I can go through-
But then it would still be limited to the height restriction.
Yeah. But 50 feet per house is, you know, if you don't ratchet that down, and you constrain the rest of the site in any other greater way than it already is, the result will be the towerhouse, which I'm not sure is desirable.
I mean, at some point, people just need to buy more land. I mean, putting a 4,000-square-foot house on a tenth of an acre is sort of, you know, a lot.
Yeah. I mean, we have, you know, mostly established lot sizes. They're older antiquated subdivisions, a lot of them. And then we've got a lot of other factors that come into play. And I can go through those if you want, but it's actually fairly complicated.
I'd like to see them.
Yeah. Can you, okay, there's a couple ways that you can regulate building mass. And those are either in a form-based manner, and that's, and we've heard a lot about form-based codes, and people have been kind of talking about that in the community. We, that for us would require a monumental sea change in terms of staffing and how we do things. I mean, it would be drastically different, because then you're talking about requiring design elements on a structure. You know, I've gone through what some of those can be, roof form, transitional volumes, divided mass, things like that. So you're really looking at the architectural nature of the building in a different way. One of the other things that you could do is maximum building height, which we have, is 50 feet. That for a single family is pretty high. I mean, that is. I mean, that's a big house. And if you look at height combined with mass, these really are the two main things that determine how a structure interacts with its environment, hands down. The other things you could do are maximum floor area ratio, or lot coverage percentages, which is a variation of floor area ratio, and talk about later, and impervious surface ratio. Go ahead. So this is what we're really talking about here, scale. And this picture's kind of from somewhere in the Midwest, but you get the idea. It's the, how does that structure fit with the existing structures in the neighborhood? And the little diagram up there is, shows you a transitional picture, but we don't often get that. Often, what we get is more like the guy there with his big house next to the cottage. Floor area ratio, there's two diagrams here. When you're talking about commercial buildings, it's a totally different animal. And we have always interpreted the floor area ratios that we do have established in the Land Development Code as being a commercial venture. So we apply those to commercial land uses. Because with residential, other things come into play that don't necessarily come into play in an urban setting for, you know, urban buildings or non-residential buildings. And you see, there's a picture there on the side. That little circle picture is one of our houses, and it has a floor area ratio of about .89. So just to give you an idea, I mean, it does affect how much the building takes up the lot. But when you have other things like setbacks and stormwater buildable areas and different things like that, and then you apply a floor area ratio, again, you can get into the danger of the towerhouse, or you can get into having a very, very low floor area ratio.
Can I ask you a question? Because you talk about the difference between single-family residential and commercial. To me, that's, that line has been blurred with these monster houses, because they're not single-family residences. It's strictly a vacation rental home, which really is a-
Commercial.
-mini-hotel, which is commercial.
Mm-hmm.
So how do you, how could we go about addressing that? Because it's not a single-family residence.
This draft of the code does, does call them something else. It calls them short-term vacation rentals. It does not call them single-family residential. So we're establishing a different treatment.
Does that make them a commercial structure?
Um, no, but you could, I believe that we still have zoning controls, and they've changed. And I had sent that legislation. I think that, you know, initially, they had changed the legislation to where we didn't have zoning controls. But then I think they went back and made it a change where we do. So I think you could say where they can go, you know, that land use. And if you wanna say it's commercial, it's definitely not a single family. But you could say, you know, in what zoning districts they could go. And you can also say how they behave. You know, what is their design framework?
See, that's, to me, is where we, that's, that's one of the biggest things we need to address in South Walton. Because those houses are anything but a house. And when you've got one of those monsters sitting there that sleeps 29 people with four parking places, it don't even make no sense.
Well, let's go, and I can give you an idea of how to, if, if, if the, if the community issue is the size or the mass, not the impacts like parking-
I think the biggest issue is, is not necessarily size or mass, but occupancy.
Mm-hmm.
Occupancy is where you have a problem, because a house can be 5,000 square feet. And if it's occupied by one family with four kids, they're gonna have, you know, a few people there and a few cars. But if it's a vacation rental house, and you've got 29 people sleeping in that same structure, your parking becomes a nightmare. And it becomes a nightmare for the neighbors, because they gotta put up with the noise associated.
But, but size does relate to usage.
Yeah.
And, I mean, you can't put 29 people in a 2,000-square-foot house, so.
I don't know about that.
Well, unless, well, maybe when they're in college, they could do that.
Well, you know, I mean, I think some communities do regulate occupancy. And, you know, that's a different matter that I haven't really looked into. But if that's something you would like me to look into, I can.
I don't want this realistic to do in this thing today. But I think going forward, that is, I think we have to start looking at how you get some control over those properties.
Yeah. I think we can easily kind of make them fit better into the setting in terms of how the building is massed, how it looks. And we can reduce the number of cars they bring if we, if we were to go this way. And we can kind of open up the setbacks a little bit. You know, if that's as far as we wanna go, that's kind of what's in this package. If we wanna do something different, that's not in here.
Yeah. I think largely it's probably passed us at this point. But we need to start trying to figure out how to control it.
Yeah.
In your opinion, though, this is a step in the right direction to at least limiting those or curbing them?
Yes. I mean, I think, you know, if you really wanted to kind of bring the size down, I think the only way to do that, and that's kind of the conclusion of this, if I go through all of these diagrams, is height. It's really not floor area ratio or impervious surface area ratio. It's really the height. Because of our finished floor elevation requirements, because of our stormwater requirements, because of our preservation requirements, we have so many other things going on that affect how much space that building takes up on the lot, that to get further into sort of lot coverage is really problematic for us. So the, the most effective, least complicated way to really address this mass of the building for us would be height.
Okay.
And I can skip all that if you just are happy with that conclusion. But there, I go through kind of the, you know, there, there's a lot going on in South Walton. And it's, we are one of the few communities that has single-family stormwater requirements. In fact, the only one. I haven't found another city or county that has that. We also have preservation requirements, Coastal Dune Lake requirements. You know, there's just lots going on. Parking requirements that can get better or worse, you know, depending on which way we go with that. So it's really hard to say that the building should take up much less area on the lot, if that makes sense.
Well, I agree. And we've all, we've all been through this before, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I, you know, I, I know we have a lot of people here tonight. And I would, you know, I don't think we have to go through in as much detail as we have done. But if there's questions asked later, then we just have to be prepared to answer them.
Okay.
And that would be my opinion.
Let me point out just two, a couple other things here, because I don't want anybody to say that I'm sneaking it in on you. We have, access management standards are changed in here, Section 5.0404. This really deals with making sure that we are reviewing new developments for how they impact the transportation system. You know, we wanna make sure that driveways are put in the right place, and that cross-connection is provided, and that public safety is maintained. And I really think our code was kind of lacking there, just to be honest with you. So those standards are increased. So we will be looking at those developments differently in terms of how they interact with the public street system. And with adjacent driveways and intersections, we, we just are not, are not kind of up where everybody else is on that.
We've never had any control over that.
Yeah. Well, it's, that's a real public safety issue. And I, you know, it's my, you know, I, I think we oughta start looking at that a little bit more. I've just sat through some development meetings, and that's, the county engineer's office also recommended that we do this. And I think we need to add some strength here. And we may need to revisit as, if we go to a mobility fee structure in the, in the future, where we talk about things like, you know, if DOT recommends a turn lane, but it's their recommendation, and it doesn't, you know, happen, and we probably need it. So there's, there's some increased standards there. The single-family stormwater revisions are in this packet. The only change that we've made there is that we are given the option of having final construction plans or an as-built survey when those are done. So that's a, it just makes things easier for people in case they can't get the survey. We've heard that surveyors are not as available as, as people would like on that timeframe. Okay. That's it. And we can go back to that if we need to.
Commissioners, any questions for staff that haven't been asked? I'll open up for public comments. Is there anybody who has concerns or comments they'd like to make, or questions they'd like to ask? Wow. You must have done an outstanding job. I think you did. Okay, we'll close public comments, commissioners. What we need is a recommendation to move this forward to the BCC. Now everybody talk at once.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to item number two, the Asland Small-Scale Amendment. It's a request approved by ordinance. It's been reviewed by Renee Bradley, and I'll ask her to introduce this.
And for the record, Mr. Perry's gonna recuse himself on this item.
Good evening, Renee Bradley. This is a small-scale amendment application submitted by Dewberry on behalf of Asland One LLC, requesting to approve a change to adopt future land use of 2.65 acres of large-scale agricultural and 1.93 acres of estate residential to industrial, for a total of 4.57 acres to go to industrial. Project's located at or on Ed Brownfield Road, and is identified by the number in your packet. We don't have any outstanding technical comments. Traffic will be further reviewed at the time in which a project comes forth on that parcel. And I'll be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Commissioners, questions? Okay. Beth, you wanna tell us what this is all about?
Yes, sir. I've not been sworn in. I don't know if I should be sworn in first.
Not for it.
Okay. That's good. That's great news. So we've been working on a project for a number of years to develop a lined Class III landfill for Asland One LLC. The land use change is before you today, really is to, for the scale house at the entrance to the Class III facility. There'll be scales, a small scale house, and a small off- There'll be scales, a small scale house and a small office. I think it's 12 by 53 portable building-type office. That's all that we have planned to go on this property. And so we have a, I have a preliminary site plan, but we're, we're not applying for a development order yet. And so I figured if you guys wanted to see what we're planning to do, I've got a preliminary site plan, but that essentially is it. We really didn't realize that we had to get a, a land use change. We thought it was all ag to start with, but it turned out, due to the maps, part of it was, you know, estate residential and part of the rest of it was ag. And so this would straighten that out in order for us to move forward.
But this is just for the scale house? There's no dumping that will-
No, sir, none whatsoever. No, this is not part of any of the, in, none of the permitted landfill facility is on this property. This is strictly for the scale house and for a small office, portable office.
Sorry, the entrance?
Yes, sir, it is. And there's already a road going through it and it's already, it's been cleared for years.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look up for public comments. Anybody have any comments on this item? Seeing now, we'll close public comments. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item, number three, is the Mallett Small Scale Amendment. This is a request to approve by ordinance. It's been reviewed by Bob Baronte and I'll ask him to introduce this one.
Good evening. As, as Max said, this is a small-scale amendment application submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of Susan Mallett requesting approval to amend the future land use category from conservation residential 2 to 1 to neighborhood infill on approximately 9.94 acres. It is located on the east side of Hunter's Road, approximately one-half miles north of the US 98 West and County Highway 30A intersection and is identified by the parcel numbers in your project. As you see, there's one opposition letter in your, in your, your packet. The, the proposal meets the compatibility analysis. There are really no outstanding comments to address. And I would be glad to answer any questions. Can I enter this staff report into the record, please?
Yes, you can. Accept it.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions, commissioners? I do. What is the potential, I guess, density change with this?
The applicant's here. I will let him go over that and I would turn it over to Scott Jenkins.
Okay.
Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. I'm here representing Susan Mallett, who's actually here also, if you have any questions of the owner. But to answer your question, infill would allow a base density of four units per acre. It could go up to eight units per acre based on compatibility, so it's kind of a, a range there. Just kind of give you a brief overview of what we're looking at here. The property is located here. Hunter's Road is actually along this edge. This is 98. This is County Road 38. As you can see, all of the pink area is basically village mixed use, which is a high-density both residential and commercial land use category. Directly to the south of this property, there's an existing apartment complex that we've sandestined uses for work for housing. There's an existing subdivision to the north and an existing subdivision to east. All of the property on the other side of Hunter's Road is basically undeveloped at this point, but I think there's some plans for that. Just to show you an aerial overview, so you can kind of see what's around the, the area. This is a single-family to the north. This is the apartment complex, single-family to the south. It's commercial along the front of 98, obviously. Terramar apartments is actually right over this area, just to give you an idea. The reason that Ms. Mallett is asking for a land use change to infill, and I'll kind of show you what her ideas are in a second. We also have a conceptual site plan. Obviously, this is land use change. This is not for development order. But just to kind of show you an idea of what could occur here. The high-density down here and the, and the lower-density, obviously, conservation land and CR 2 to 1, we're just trying to get a better transition, more reasonable transition from the high-density to the lower-density to the north. And Ms. Mallett feels like this would be a good opportunity to provide some higher-density housing, attainable workforce things. I don't think it would be anything that would be really on an expensive level of workforce housing. Infill would allow, like I said, four units per acre base, up to eight units per acre. It would allow for a single-family residential. It would also allow for multifamily, which would be like townhomes or duplexes, something, something of that idea. It would, it would allow neighborhood-serving, commercial uses potentially, but that probably would not go here just based on compatibility and what's around it. I can tell you the, the owner doesn't have any intentions of doing any kind of commercial development eventually. As far as the conceptual idea, when I spoke to Ms. Mallett, she really doesn't have any specific ideas in mind. But I got a few calls, you know, asking about what potentially would go there. And the biggest concern, as you say, are typical things, stormer, traffic, things like that. And I heard a few concerns about potentially doing multifamily in this area. So when it comes to Ms. Mallett, she asked to, to kind of put together a concept of what we kind of throw that on, on the table in full disclosure, so you can see what that would look like. And this is an idea of a conceptual kind of quadplexes that go along here, townhomes that would fit on the property. The darker green are existing wetlands in the areas that would remain under star. The, the other green area is basically open spaces. She would obviously have to meet whatever stormwater requirements that would have to be met at the time for the area. And for this is probably a wet detention because there's wet detention that's both north and south of this. But this is just kind of an idea of how this can cluster together on the piece of property. Again, it's not for development order, so this is just basically giving you an idea of what would fit. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have about this right now. I know there's probably some, some questions that the audience has that we'll be happy to answer, too.
If you look at that picture we're looking at right there, what ratio would that be if you built it just as you're showing there? As far as density?
Oh, that, what's, what's shown right here is 52 units proposed, so that's about 5.25 units per acre.
And directly north of this parcel, what, that's single-family homes?
Single-family homes, that's right. Those at the time, all these lots are a little bit larger because I mean, they're all separate up in that area. But that is, it's, uh, 17 or 18 lots, I think, about the same size of parcel.
Right. Significantly larger lots.
Yes, significantly larger. That's correct.
What's the ratio to the property south of it, do you know?
Uh, that's village mixed use. I believe it is at the maximum of the 12 units per acre, basically.
12 per acre?
Yes.
Okay, so you go from 12 to this piece to half acre, wherever those other ones are. What, what other ones to the north of that? What size of those lot?
Uh, they're like 75 by 140, so they're just under a half, so about a third.
Had to be that to get a 70 tank, huh?
Yes.
What's the, that's Hunter's Road that this is on front of?
Yeah, Hunter's Road here.
And it, where does it come out at, on 98?
Yes, sir, it comes out on 98, actually, right. In this location.
So basically, there's one way in and one way out.
Yeah, Hunter, Hunter's Road comes here and it actually did have a subdivision back here.
So they come out on 98, you can turn to the west only?
Correct, that's right. And you can only go to the right here. There's no left here.
What is to the east of the property?
To the east here is, there's a single-family subdivision here. There's some townhomes located in this area. Commercial development down here.
Just completely surrounded except for the west?
Yes.
Okay. The, the roadway that goes in there, is that a paved road?
Yeah.
Two, two standard lanes?
Yes.
How much is, how much county roadway does it have through there?
Uh, I'll tell you what, I think it's 66 feet. I think the 33 feet on the other side of the center line, but I don't believe that for sure. We don't have to survey every actual roadway, but I believe 66.
I have concerns increasing that density that much. And I understand that it's village mixed use all around it.
Yes.
But there's a reason that you have village mixed use and you have these other land uses sitting next to each other. If you made, if you changed all of that to the higher density, you'd never get in and out of Hunter's Road. And, and that's a concern.
Right.
Because the biggest concern right now in South Walton is traffic and water. Where's it going? Because there's no place for traffic or water to go.
Yeah, but the parcel to the west of it has access to 98, too.
I understand. Yeah, I just, increasing density that much is a concern of mine. Especially until we get some of this other land use stuff under control and figure out what we're doing because that just, that just concerns me.
That's a, that's a power line north of there, correct?
Yes, sir, this is Gulf Harbor. They're about across the area, east and west.
So basically, there's no, no way in the future to ever change that from one way in and one way out?
No, everything to the north of this area is, the green is state property, but it's conservation land.
Only way you're gonna get in is out of Hunter's Road.
That, that is correct.
Yeah, but there's probably not gonna be any other properties that are gonna be accessing that road either.
Um, more than likely, the only properties that would typically do that, there may be some side accesses here, but they'll obviously have access on 98 from their property. I would say, so whenever, whenever something does come in here-
The one directly south of it would. It's still vacant, right? Or is it?
No, sir, this, this is the one that's developed.
Okay.
That's the 12 to 1 ratio, too.
Yeah.
But if you, if you build more, I mean, then you're starting, you're putting more access points on 98, which is not desirable. I mean, that messes up traffic on 98, the more egress and ingress points you have on 98. So I have a feeling somebody's gonna say, well, we all go to Hunter Road.
Well, well, I would assume that this parcel, a parcel this large would have at least one access point on 98, that this location would be in.
Well, it doesn't have a development order yet, so that it would probably be required to have some accesses through there, so that you're not-
I can tell you, I don't think, I don't think the fire department would allow some access points.
I don't know. I look at that piece to the south, it's 12 to 1. And then you're transitioning up to possibly 5, somewhere in the 5 to 1 ratio and then to 2 to 1 ratio. It doesn't seem like that much of a, you know, seems like the transitions-
And I guess I would say to, to, oh, thank you.
That's from the compatibility analysis, man.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's based on the, the base, the base density of 4, yeah. Okay, thank you. The-
Max, what was that?
The compatibility analysis suggests that the proposed change would allow a maximum of four units per acre.
But there are some bonus density points you can get, right?
Yeah, the, the base density for infill with central water and sewers, four units per acre. It can go up to eight based on compatibility.
We can't limit it to four, though, at this, can we? Well, then there's-
Well, I, I would say that, just, just to point out, none of this is development order. Anything that happens here would have to come back before you guys and meet all of the other plans.
But, but, and everybody says that, but then they come back and it's all bad.
I understand.
We could give them fair warning, though.
Yes.
They gotta come back, so if it's above four, we could say we're not gonna approve it if it comes back.
We'll wait and see whatever project is-
Yeah, you can't do that.
Well, if we could do it now, then, well, why couldn't we do it then?
It strongly suggests that they consider that.
But you said that we could limit it to four per acre now? You could.
Can we do that, city?
Uh, we've done it in the past with agreements on these small-scale amendments.
Yeah, and, and I'd be happy to ask Ms. Mallett, she's here, you know, we could ask her if she would be willing to stipulate.
Usually how it's been handled, though, is that the developer requests to enter into a developer agreement.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be happy to. My thing is it would be infill limited to four units per acre. Is that correct? Yes, that's what we're talking about, yeah. Yes, ma'am, that's true. And she's saying she's okay with that? Agreed. I'm sorry, you're, you're okay with infill limited to four units per acre? To one? Yeah. Well, I think the concern is just the increase in density, so it's really up to you. I'm sorry? Okay. The applicant would stipulate to four units per acre with the infill land use if y'all chose to consider that.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I do not, no. Thank you.
We'll open the floor to public comments. Is there anybody here we'd like to speak? Young lady? You please do come up and state your name.
My name is Heather Cavanaugh. I live on Hunter's Road and the neighborhood that I live in is the residential neighborhood to the north. There are no more than 17 homes back there. Today, we are a family neighborhood, primarily residents, with maybe two rental properties with long-term rentals. Today, living with the property that is there in existence today with the high-density, the sand destined housing, we already struggle with traffic, getting in and out of the neighborhood. There is no turn lane. We make a U-turn from 98 if we're coming from the west and then having to dodge traffic to turn into our neighborhood. We already deal with high-density traffic coming in and out of the apartment complex without stopping. Numerous times, I have waited for a car so that they don't hit me and my child. On each side of Hunter's Road is a ditch filled with water. I have seen, in the 10 years that I've owned my home, I have seen at least two vehicles in front of the existing park, uh, complex as they're leaving, pushing a vehicle into that ravine. It's a safety issue. It's also, the neighborhood immediately behind it does back up to state land. There is numerous wildlife that comes through that neighborhood. We have deer, rabbits, coyotes, we have bears. And, and increasing density will reduce that. I, I support residential, single-family homes. I would even support low-density townhomes or patio homes. I do not support, if you have four units per acre, almost 10 acres, that's another 40 units. One person isn't living there. You could have another four people per unit plus. I have strong reservations and I wanted to share that with the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, absolutely.
What do you consider low-density townhomes?
You know, in the way that, townhomes I struggle with, I'm thinking more of a patio home. Building that street up any further than it is, is, it's going to be challenging for the residents no matter what. The neighborhood behind it in, in size, these are two lots and these are the equivalent of two. And this, there's 17 homes and we're talking now about putting almost 40 here. From a traffic standpoint alone, that's, that's a major concern unless infrastructure is increased to handle the traffic.
Ma'am, can I ask you, in your neighborhood, what's the stormwater issues like?
I'm so sorry?
What's the stormwater issues like?
Uh, towards the front of, of Hunter's Road, as you approach this direction, water does not run off well. When it rains, it's puddling in the streets. During hurricanes, though, and tropical storms that we've experienced while we've been there, generally it's flowing well into the retention areas, into the wetlands. But I don't know how that would work with increased density.
All of y'all are on the septics?
We are. The other concern I had is any consideration for commercial use there. And, and my concern is if the property is rezoned, there's nothing stopping the property from being sold and whatever the current owner may have planned for it could all be put by the wayside. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Fred Tricker, T-R-I-C-K-E-R. And I'm here to oppose this amendment, uh, based on density. Um, and what I did is I went through the standards for approval in the LDC. And the first one relates to, uh, impact on public facilities. And, you know, it's pretty clear to me, I believe, that most of the problems we have in South Walton, uh, related to roads, stormwater, uh, overcrowding, even beach access, is related to density. So, if you take a, a property like this, which, as I, my calculation says, you're allowed fourteen homes on that property. And what I heard is that, you know, it's possibly going to be fifty-two. That's a factor of four. And if they cut that in half with a, a density of four units per acre, it's still double what the property is zoned for. And, you know, this is not a big project, but if we keep giving these density increase approvals to places like this, we're going to end up with a bigger mess than we already have. So, you know, at some point, we need to put a stop to this. Okay, with respect to the natural environment, Conservation Residential, as I understand it, relates to a property that is environmentally sensitive. So, this property is roughly thirty percent wetlands. Uh, the rest of the property is, uh, doesn't drain well, uh, high water table, uh, pretty level. And the wetlands depend on the vegetation that's on that property for, uh, you know, to keep everything balanced. So, um, if you look at the Conservation Residential, which is currently zoned, you got a requirement to, to preserve sixty percent of the property in natural state. That's important. So, um, I think from that point of view, it doesn't make sense to approve an increase in density and, and change the zoning. Another, yeah, another item relates to whether the proposed amendment would adversely affect the property values. And I can't believe that if you're going in and allowing two to four times as many homes on a piece of property, it is going to affect other people's property values, I believe. And then the last thing here is, um, whether the, the proposed amendment is in conflict with the public interest. Well, I think it is. Uh, because what you have in this amendment and others like it is that the benefit goes to the property owner. And a property owner is, has a profit motive, which there's nothing wrong with that. Um, but the public benefit, there is none. The community has no benefit from this whatsoever. Land use changes are not entitlements. People are not entitled to them. We don't give them, to them just because they want them. There has to be a reason for it, and profit is not a suitable motive, I don't think. Or, it's a good motive, not a good reason to give a amendment. So, thank you very much.
Do you live behind that subdivision?
No, sir.
Where do you live?
Seagrove Beach.
You just don't like the project?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm opposed to density increases, whether it's through amendments or whether it's through variances. So, I've appeared at other, uh, meetings on the same issue. Uh, we currently have a lawsuit going on right now related to density. So, it's something that I believe in very strongly. And it, it's, it's a pattern, uh, that we've observed, it's been going on for a long time. It has to stop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners, uh, my name is John King. Um, I own the quarter there, the four acres there on Highway ninety-eight and Hunter's Road. Uh, that's neither here nor there, but the, uh, today, well, um, May the tenth, nineteen seventy-eight, I got, uh, became a realtor, been doing this for forty years as of today. And wrote a column in the newspaper for many years and, and advised various entities on how to use land and, and a great deal of marketing stuff. And I, I only bring that up to say, this is an appropriate change. You, you know, we, we talk about some workforce housing. The only way that you're going to get any workforce housing in this county is have inappropriate locations increased density. Now, I don't know the, the exact size of it, I came in kind of cold, but, you know, wouldn't you be better off if the neighbors are looking for a way to have some separation and, or have less density? Maybe you're better off having a, more of a buffer between the two. But if you've got commercial on my property or on the highway, then you've got twelve units an acre. Wouldn't it stand to reason that you would have something that's a, a little more dense? And I, and I'll say this about the subdivision, nothing against Hunter Village or whatever the name of it is, but if it wasn't for septic tanks, I guarantee you that Tim Henderson would not have made those lots that big. So, it's probably only because of the, you know, it's, it's single-family wider lots, because need, you know, you had to have that to have septic tanks. So, I just think it's an, an appropriate use. Um, you know, I don't think there's any, anything wrong with this lady getting her what she's entitled to. I don't know her, but, uh, the difference between fifty-two units and forty, forty-two units means a great deal to her family, I would say, in, in how, you know, if they sold this for townhouses, uh, that's, that's a big difference, and who cares if it's, I don't think it meets, makes a big, great big difference if it's forty units versus fifty-two or whatever number is, if they're going to be townhouses. And it's, it's a, a very big need. The other thing about the traffic, you've got currently seventeen homes on a road that is just like West Chewitt or East Chewitt, where there's hundreds and hundreds of homes. I don't think traffic, I, I go out there...
Traffic is a pleasure on East and West Hewitt, right?
Well, well...
I'm just, I'm just asking that facetiously, because I know...
Yeah, I mean, there's not, there's not an issue on East and West Hewitt.
Okay.
You know, Mac Bayou was a bear getting, I live off of West Chewitt. Um, it, it was, uh, Mac Bayou was a bear till that was opened up. It's taken some, you know, taken some pressure off of Mac Bayou, those other roads. But, but my point on the traffic is, I pull up there, have met numerous people at my site, the four acres. I go down Hunter's Road, park, turn around in the apartment area or in Hunter's Village with the, the subdivision, and come down. I've never had anybody in front of me at a stoplight, I mean, at the stop sign. So, I don't think that's a concern, I think it's an, an appropriate use. And again, where, how else are we going to get any workforce housing if you don't make some uncomfortable decisions time to time? So...
I think we might, I ask you a question, though?
Yes, sir.
You made a statement just, just a few moments ago, that she should get what she's entitled to.
Well, what I'm saying to you is...
A land use change is not an entitlement.
No, sir, I understand that.
Understand that?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is...
Just, let me, let me finish what I'm saying, because I listened to you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, she's entitled to what her land use is currently. That's what she's entitled to, because that's what it was when she bought it.
Yes, sir, and you know better than any, anybody to...
I don't know better than anybody, but I understand that.
But we have a, we have a process that would allow her to take her property to a more appropriate use.
We have a process that people get to make decisions, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay? When she bought that piece of property, she understood what she was entitled to. So, using that word entitlement...
Very, very different.
Using, using the word entitlement to a land use change is incorrect. Okay? Because she's not entitled to a land use change.
That, that, that wasn't, that wasn't the statement that I was trying to make. Uh, what I'm saying is, I don't think that the, because her family would make, uh, some, uh, thousands of dollars more, that, that should be part of your decision.
Well, let me, let me ask you, since you're a realtor. Now, I, I have no idea what the, the people in the back, what their property's worth. But for purposes of discussion, let's just say, uh, that size lot, those homes, let's say five hundred thousand dollars. And you put in, right next door to them, these townhomes, forty of them...
Workforce housing.
That workforce housing next to these homes, is that going to make those people's property values go up or down? And if it goes down, don't they have the right to protect their property values? Because when they bought their property, they were entitled to two to one. That's what, that's what the property, the, the zoning is. So, property rights means that we have to, we have to protect their rights, too. And they have the right to, to protect their property values. So, if, if you are telling me that their property values will go up if we allow this, that's one thing. But, are you willing to, as a realtor, to tell us that their property values on that backside are going to go up if we put forty homes in there?
So, they could have, you, you're okay with forty?
I'm, I'm just saying, for purposes of discussion, putting townhomes on that property, is that going to make those people behind it? Is it going to make their property values go up or down?
Well, I think because of the configuration of the land, the wetlands that are involved, it's probably going to be townhouses regardless, isn't it?
Oh, no, no, sir.
No?
I would say that.
Hey, I wouldn't have a dog in the fight, I'm telling you, I think it's an appropriate use. Uh, I only, it, it's a, it's, it's a step-down density from twelve units an acre, from commercial to twelve units an acre. And it, it, I just think it's appropriate use.
I got, wait, I got something. The exact argument you just made can be made by the lady that's trying to get land use changed, though, because her values are, have, have potentially gone down because of twelve units per acre on her southern border. So, what we're trying to do, and I agree with you, the fact that there's a, there's a problem...
That's the land use that was already in place.
Doesn't mean it was right.
I understand that, but it's what was there.
That's all I got, ma'am.
I didn't, but we didn't do that. That's part of this process is to correct issues that weren't done right to begin with.
I understand, yes, sir.
Hey, uh, David Bell, and I am a resident of Bayou Farms, that's the neighborhood to the north. I wasn't going to talk about property values, but, uh, they have been on the rise. I can tell you it's public record, they've been selling in the, the mid-two hundreds recently, so. Um, my concern is with the change, is the road, the road, Bayou Farms is a private road from where you make the turn back into the neighborhood. But the county is currently not maintaining that road from ninety-eight back there. So, before y'all make any decision, I think the, the commission should look at maintaining that road.
Is it a private road?
Well, it's kind of a no-man's land.
Where?
These were things were built, you know, in the two thousand five, two thousand six. We can't get straight into it.
It's either, it's either a private road or a public road. If it's public, the county would maintain it, if it's private, it's up to the homeowners.
Could you show us where you're at, what you're talking about?
Okay, here's the neighborhood.
It's right in the middle of it.
Uh, and this is, this is Bayou Farms, and this is Platte Bayou Farms, right here.
Okay.
Just, just north of this parcel. Um, this is Bayou Farms property. And if you can tell me who, who, who owns that.
That's Hunter's?
That's Hunter's Road. This is all Hunter's Road, and it's Hunter's Road, so it makes a turn. No one is currently maintaining this section of this road from now on.
That's a public road, isn't it?
Yes, sir, the county has constructed that road.
Okay.
And nobody's maintaining it. I've been there seven years.
We need to contact your county commissioner.
Well...
There should be.
I'll be guaranteed they'd be willing to help you out.
That, actually, if, if any decision you make, please look at that road. There is no turn lane coming off Highway ninety-eight, so you're looking at increasing the density on that parcel. Or, even if you don't increase the density, any development in there, there's no, nobody maintaining that road and, and, and the increased traffic, that's what it is.
Okay. Anybody else like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sue Mallett, I'm the owner of the property. Um, when I bought the property, it was zoned as, um, Conservation Residential, but so was the property to the south. So, the, um, San Destin got that zoning change, and that, the apartment complex has gone in since I owned the property. So, there's some clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Have any questions?
That's all right. No, I'm just, I, you know, in general, I mean, are you looking at workforce housing? Is that what you're looking at there?
That's really the only thing that makes sense for right there.
Now, when you say, is it workforce slash affordable housing, or...
Well, be, with commercial in the front and the homes in the back, um, recently selling around two hundred to two fifty, there's really nothing else you can put there. Right? That would make sense. That's what I, that's my thought, anyways, so...
I don't know, I mean...
What's your price point on affordable housing?
My price point?
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's see, I would have to say something under three hundred. Around three hundred, around, no, I don't know.
Servers and cleaners can afford that?
Pardon me?
Servers and cleaners can afford that?
Affordable is subjective.
I said under, I, I don't know, you know, it's different, I guess, to everybody.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think there's a difference between what people consider affordable and what the definition of affordable is when it comes to housing, so...
I mean, we're talking Walton County, South Walton.
I understand, you said South Walton County.
Yes.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, good evening. My name is Carol Ritchie, and I too live on Hunter's Road. I just moved in, I bought the house last April and moved in in July, and it's still a work in progress. But anyway, um, we would, I think the majority of us homeowners on the street would be fine if it was, uh, another road of private individual homes. But to throw that many more people, like, you know, I hate to get up here and say it again, but those buses come in, turn down there to pick them up, you know, we have to dodge them turning into the road. It's pretty crazy. Um, I know someone mentioned about the wildlife, you know, if you're taking that away, you know, that's a concern, as well as the big new, um, area that's been cleared there. I don't know what's going to go in that as well, but, well, you know, I've had the black bear and her cub in my front yard. Um, we take away more woods, you know, it's just, um, less room for the birds and the bees. So, I just wanted to throw my two cents in.
Okay.
I oppose.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something. Uh, they may have mentioned affordable housing. I don't think they're talking about the context of affordable and workforce housing that requires some type of government financing or special mortgage financing to achieve that kind of thing.
That's what I was trying to...
What they're talking about is developing lots that would provide opportunities for housing within the two to three hundred thousand range.
Right.
And in South Walton, that's affordable housing.
I agree.
It doesn't involve the government.
Right.
But housing that's affordable to a segment of the folks that live in South Walton now.
I understand.
And if you keep those lot sizes larger, then they have to sell for more, and you're going to have to have more expensive houses in there. But, but that, but, yeah, those folks...
Do you have anything else you want to say?
Me? Um, just a couple of things, just to clarify. Um, the, the roadway is a public roadway, I believe it was constructed by the county, actually. Um, and you, and you're right, I don't think we're talking about affordable housing per the definition, because it's, it's almost impossible to, to meet that requirement.
You can't do that.
Yeah, especially south of the bay. Um, but yeah, again, um, I just don't want to get too tied to the concept. We just wanted to show that, so you could see what it would look like from a clustering standpoint, not impacting the wetlands, not impacting any of the, of the really environmentally sensitive areas.
How much, how much land, what's, what's, what can you, actually usable land that you can use?
On this piece of property?
Yeah, that piece of property.
Out of the nine acres, it's, it's actually probably about six and a half, I would say, if you looked at the, if you looked at the concept. Surprisingly, not that much wetland area over here. Um, so, yeah, they've got a pretty good area of uplands to build within. The, the tax housing concept works a little bit better because it's easier to cluster. I mean, it just makes it work a little bit better when you have islands of upland areas. But obviously, they're not specifically tied down to this concept, so you can point that out. That's, that's all I would say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy McCullen. Um, you were talking about houses ranging from two to three hundred on this other place, and, um, housing would be more expensive because if they put it on a bigger piece of property. We're selling ours at that price, two fifty, so let them keep it on the same-sized property as we have. Don't, don't get a higher price on a townhome and put all those houses over there. We don't need that.
Okay.
My house is next door to a retention pond. You put so much concrete over there, where's that water going to go?
Well, they have to keep the water for the development on site, so...
Well, those ditches going down Hunter's Road, I mean, they are not just small ditches. You can take a canoe down them things. So, think twice.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Can we go ahead and close public comments? Commissioners, any discussion?
I still think the transition from twelve to four to two is reasonable for that area. Some, somebody changed that one in front of her to twelve to one. That's why we have this process is to correct things that weren't done correctly at the beginning, because it shouldn't have been changed to twelve to one without changing hers.
Well, if you use that reasoning though, it should change everything out there then.
Not if you transition it down, maybe they shouldn't change it then, but I mean, she should be allowed to transition, because you go from twelve to, twelve to one to two to one? It's not much of a transition.
There's places all over South Walton where mistakes were made, and, and if we start, I mean, if we just use that as an excuse to increase density, we'll have, there, there's no stopping it.
Well, that's why I said if we go to four to one, she asked for five, and could, could potentially go to eight, but if we limit it to four, it gives us a compromise for her sake.
But, you can take that property right there, it's two to one right now, so you can make, you can divide that into lots and make a killing. And everybody, because the, the neighborhood said they would be happy with two to one, they would be happy with the same.
Well, yeah, she's got that now, she did have to a land use change.
That's what I'm saying, why, why do we need to change that, as Commissioner Stewart said, it, it's not a guaranteed right.
How do you know somebody's gonna wanna buy a two, a, a half acre lot that's got twelve to one to the south side of them? Because you just made that argument before that it was gonna reduce their values.
You got a point.
But if you also put that, many more structures down there, all of them coming out on the road, it's all turning one way on ninety-eight, now, that's an issue. It's a safety issue. And it makes a difference when you're increasing that, that amount of tra, if, if you could go, if there was a different way of road to come in and out, some other access to ninety-eight, but if you put that many structures down there with that many people, and if it's workforce, whatever they are, if they're working, they're most likely going to come out, most of them at the same time. And there, there may not be an issue right now, and it may not, nobody may have got behind Mr. King going down that road, but they would, if you put that many more structures down there.
And if you, if you had forty, most people have, if that's two cars, you're talking about eighty cars. And I guarantee you, the, the property to the west, those folks are gonna empty out on that road too, so, um, the traffic is a bad.
I understand not to do, you know, maximize your property, I understand that, but I also understand that there's, there's a lot of properties out there that's maximized now and over maximized, and we've got traffic on roads that can't handle it now.
That's my whole thing, I mean, I'm, I've never been opposed to development, I mean, I believe in property rights, but you, you come, you come to a point to where, when do you start pulling reins back to start slowing things down? And that's a difficult question, because
Right.
All you ever hear out of South Walton is how bad the traffic is, that's all you ever hear. I mean, it's, you don't ever hear we have wonderful roads and plenty of access, and we can go wherever we wanna go in no time. So, I mean, I guess the quandary is, I mean, do you, where do you, I guess, where do you draw the line? And where do you start trying to at least limit some traffic? I don't disagree that there's a big difference from coming in here and saying, I want to go to eight to one and going to four to one, that, that's a substantial change. But at the same time, it's also a substantial change going from two to one to four to one. It's not as substantial as the alternatives.
I think, I agree with you, I don't, I'm, I like development, I mean, I, I, I wanna everybody make money too. And, but property rights is a double edged sword, and those folks in the rear have a right, I mean, we've got to protect them as well. And I'm sorry that that was an obvious mistake, I mean, that twelve to one is ridiculous, but, but we didn't do that, we're only responsible for what we do, but.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's tough to see.
You know, she could've come in here and asked for twelve to one, we'd probably been happy with four to one.
I doubt that, yeah, I mean, I, I, it, it's tough, I mean, it, it.
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Someone, someone told me this job was gonna be easy, I don't know, who was laughing?
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion which is to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to the motion to deny, say no.
No.
What was yours?
I didn't have sustained.
No, 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 no.
Aye.
Aye?
Four.
Four to two, to deny.
Yep.
Motion carries. Next item, actually, we need to take a break now, don't we, Sidney?
Yes, we do.
Let's take about fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
I just like to optimize when I get one.
I don't disagree with you, but. You're done?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome, just let me know when you go again. Karen, are you ready to go? I don't like this pen, by the way. All right, who we missing?
Tom's standing out there talking.
Tom?
I don't know where your mic is.
Not paying attention.
He didn't even budge.
I don't get to do that very often, so I did it. We were late calling a meeting back to order, and then we go into quasi judicial, so everybody will need to be sworn in.
Anyone who anticipates testifying on any of the remaining agenda items, if you would, stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you, whenever you come forward, if you would, just state your last, or state your name, um, and say that you've been sworn in, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that moves us to item number four, the Commerce Park PUD Site Plan Amendment, this is a request to approve a final order, it's been reviewed by Bob Baronte, and I'll ask him to briefly introduce it for him.
Good evening, my name is Bob Baronte. This is a, um, major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates Incorporated on behalf of Carroll Lake Properties LLC, requesting approval of one hundred and two thousand five hundred and forty-five square feet of commercial and forty-three condominiums, um, fourteen point four four, um, plus or minus acres of future land use of village mixed use. Um, some of you that have been on the board for a while may recognize this as the stock and trade, um, development. Um, there was one outstanding comment by the fire marshal, but that comment has been resolved, so there's no outstanding comments for this. Um, there, it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, I'd like to ask you to enter the staff report into record.
Accepted.
Um, and I would also ask that if you choose to, um, to approve this item tonight, to conditionally approve it on, only because it'll have to go to the June BCC, or, um, TRC meeting.
Okay.
Or D, design review board, I'll get it right, sorry. And, um, the applicant is here, if there's no questions for me, I will.
Any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, my name's Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, last name's B U R G I S, and I have been sworn. Um, the, the project before you today, a little bit of history on it, uh, this goes back to a two thousand and six, uh, PUD uh, that was approved, uh, through the county, it has been kept active, um, through the, the market turn, and, uh, to, to current date. Um, that PUD approved a hundred and two thousand seven hundred square feet of commercial and a hundred and thirty-six, um, residential and/or apartment units. We've obviously reduced the residential component considerably from a hundred and thirty-six units down to forty-three. Basically, the commercial were a couple hundred square feet under that number as well. The point being that this is a reduction from the original, uh, and, and active PUD allowances. And another important, um, factor to note was the original PUD contemplated impacting pretty much all of these wetlands to the, uh, northwest corner and the northern portion of the property, and a fair amount of the weapons here in the center portion of the project were not gonna be impacting, uh, well, I think we're impacting a grand total of a hundred and forty-three feet just to square off a, a parking lot corner.
Who owns the little cutout?
Uh.
Right here? No, the, the little, it looks like a lake on your.
Oh, that is a DOT pond, a DOT retention pond, and we actually will be, uh, jointly using that, uh, with DOT, we've got an agreement with them to, um, put our stormwater in there.
And has the capacity to do that?
Um, we increased it a bit from, from its current size, and, uh, yeah, actually, you know, if, if one stormwater facility is more efficient if you expand it rather than a bunch of small facilities. The, due to the fact of all the, the wetlands that we're, uh, keeping in place on the site, the open space is fifty-seven point six two percent of the property. And I think, uh, that pretty much summarizes the project, it, it's gonna consist of, uh, the commercial's gonna be a, the anchor store is the stock and trade furniture store. Which will be located in this area, I'm using the color site plan, but it, uh, is a direct reflection of the site plan in your, in your packet. This is the stock and trade furniture store, it's, uh, gonna be the anchor furniture store, and also the owner of the plaza, um, is.
Can you turn it toward us?
His, uh, primary, his primary business is the stock and trade.
Sure, sure, show them what you're talking about.
Um, the remainder of the, uh, commercial will be, uh, some retail, there'll be about six thousand square feet of restaurant that's anticipated. And, um, a key component of that is, we did not, uh, in our, um, parking analysis, consider uh, the, the hours of the, the businesses and the ability for there to be a, um, uh, off hour use of, of parking. In other words, the stock and trade building will close, uh, when the restaurant is probably at its highest, um, usage rate. So we feel that the, the parking's gonna be more than adequate, it meets code as it is, um, but I don't anticipate any issues with parking, if that's a concern of the board's. Be happy to ask or answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
Briefly go over what, what is in the rest of the buildings. Looks like one of them goes on the Veterans Road.
Yes, um, just, I'll approach you, so you can see a little better. This is, um, twelve of the, uh, residential units, and that will be accessed from Veterans Road, the remainder of the development will be accessed off of Highway ninety-eight. We do have an interconnected, uh, boardwalk that'll, uh, go around the DOT pond and also allow these folks access into the, uh, the remainder.
You gonna take the fence down?
Excuse me?
You gonna take the fence down?
The DOT fence, I don't think they're gonna let us take that fence down, now we can.
Well, it looks like your boardwalk's inside, that's the reason I'm asking.
Actually, the DOT fence is shown here, we.
Oh, you're expanding it outside of that?
Yes, we are expanding it outside of that.
So the fence, the fence is gonna stay in the water?
Now, we've got it designed with the, the side slopes to not require a fence, but DOT for liability reasons may require us to keep that fence up. And if they do, you know, we can't, we can't.
Have to work around it.
Yep.
So the, the boardwalk sort of, sort of curves with that northern border?
That's right, it follows the, the, uh, the pond, but we may have a fence right along the edge.
So they don't have bike or foot access, does not vehicular access to the.
That's correct, yeah. Bike and.
But you're expanding the DOT pond?
Right, we are.
Okay.
You, you're basically decreasing density from a hundred and thirty-six to forty-three residential units.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Wow.
And if, in a couple hundred square feet of commercial.
Don't hear that often.
No, no, it, it just, the, uh, the, the cost to benefit ratio of, of getting in the wetlands, um, wasn't there, and, uh, the owner was, was satisfied with, uh, with this. He's more on the, he's more of a commercial developer, not so much an apartment developer, and it just worked out that way.
One of the comments I see on here in the fire district was the auto turn analysis.
Yes, and, and. What we changed was, we have our site plan. His concern was getting into, in front of these buildings, we had kind of a tight radius here, and you can see we, um, we expanded that radius to make sure that it's trucking and it won't complicate that, that area.
So all that area to the southeast is environmental protection area?
It, it is, um, core and DEP wetlands, and we're just not gonna disturb it. Uh, you can, if you drive by it, you can see it, it's, it's pretty thick and, and pretty vegetated, and the soils are pretty dark, so.
It's a swamp.
It's a swamp.
God bless you.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the developer? Oh, wait a minute. Up here. Anybody up here? Okay, say no, okay, we'll open public comments, yes ma'am?
I'm the vice president of the homeowners association for Whispering Lake, and I have huge issues with this development. Um, we have eighty-five.
Uh, can you state your name and?
My name is Rachel Hicken.
Were you sworn in earlier?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay.
I stood up and I sworn in. Um, I live at two twenty Whispering Lake Drive, um, we have bought this house a year ago, and it's a wonderful neighborhood, we have eighty-five properties, um, houses, and, um, now they're talking about, I mean, I, I've looked at, I mean, I don't have the luxury of having these kind of, um, I didn't get all this, but the density of what they're putting in from what we have, we, we're spread out, and we all have a good community, and we all get along, and we all have a great neighborhood, and they're talking about shoving these people into this one little area and putting all of the access from forty-three condos to Veterans Boulevard, or Veterans Road, and yet, we don't have a traffic light there. So, my daughter rides the bus every day to school, and, um, I'm, I'm, uh, along with other kids, and this is, this is a hazard. It's a hazard, because these people are gonna be coming out onto Veterans Boulevard, or Veterans Road, and there's no, either they come out to Veterans Road, or they go to turn around and, on that, that's the only choice that they have. So, either they come up with something that can fix that problem, but I honestly, from what all I've heard from the neighbors that I've talked to have said, they absolutely don't want that access to Veterans Road. And I talked to everyone in our neighborhood, and like I said, we have eighty-five homes, and these people own their homes. They are not renters, they are, they're homeowners, and most of them have been there for a long time, since the beginning of this neighborhood. And I completely disagree with these, this rental coming out to our street. If they can figure that out, or they can, maybe, you know, we can do a traffic light, that's fine, but there's gotta be some kind of solution to this, because I just don't think it's safe, it's not safe. I already have trouble getting across ninety-eight. To get my daughter from school, or from, you know, whatever her functions are, I have to cross ninety-eight to take a left, and it's horrible. And to add forty-three units, and they're not disclosing what, I already asked them a few weeks. And to add 43 units, and they're not disclosing what, I already asked them a few weeks ago, I said, okay, 43 units, how many parking spots are you gonna have per unit? Didn't disclose it. Why can't you tell me that? Tell me how many? Because I know we have three-bedroom houses in our neighborhood, three and four, sometimes five, and all of us park mostly in our driveways and our garages, but some people do park in the, you know, in the street. But I don't want that to happen on Veterans Road. My husband's a firefighter. He serves in Iraq right now, and it doesn't, it, it's, it's a hazard to have these people, if they can't have parking spaces in their units, then they're gonna, you know, they're gonna park on Veterans Road. And I, I don't want that. I don't want that as a.
You understand that they meet the parking requirements of the code?
I'm sorry?
They meet the parking requirements of the code. You understand that?
Yes, I do, sir.
You also understand that they're building a whole lot less than they could?
I understand that. I do. I just, I, I, I just disagree with them coming onto Veterans Road. Veterans Road is already, it's our, my daughter, this morning, almost got hit by a car because somebody was speeding by while she was waiting for the bus. And I thought.
Veterans Road dead ends, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
Veterans Road dead ends just north of.
Yes, sir, it does. But it doesn't mean that there's people that don't come from the other way, and also people that get, you know, lost and go through and miss their turn.
But that's not the fault of this developer?
No, it's not. It's not. I, I agree. I, I, I just think that if they want to improve it, I'm fine with that. I also want to know the little logistics about it, as far as what are you going to sell these for, and what are you going to use them for? And that's what was not disclosed. And I wanted to know that before this meeting, because I like to know my facts before I come forward, and I was never given that chance and that opportunity to know the facts. So I just heard that the word apartments, and that, that upset me, because the first time I talked to them, they said condos. And I was like, okay, condos, that's great, you know, sell them, and it'll, you know, it'll improve, you know, our, our value, but apartments? No.
So what you're understanding is, is that if it's an apartment, it can be rented? If it's a condo, it cannot be rented?
If it's an apartment, it can be bought by someone and actually purchased, and then it moves forward.
But a condo can't?
Condos, condos can be rented, but it's also bought by somebody, and they have the responsibility to take care of it. But an apartment can be also just rented out to whoever. Condos are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Okay.
I mean, do you agree or not?
Well, I think either one of them can be the same.
I, I, I disagree with that.
That's fine, I'm not, I'm not here to argue.
I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you, sir. I'm not.
But I asked you to wrap it up, please.
Trust me. I'm, I'm trying, I'm not trying to argue with you.
Would you please wrap up?
I'm just saying, when I hear apartment.
Will you listen to me for just a minute, please? Could you wrap up your questions? Please?
How many parking spaces are going to be allotted to each of these units?
We'll get that answer, we'll get that answer for you in just a minute. You can ask your questions, and we'll get you the answers.
Okay, I'm done then.
Thank you. Mr. Burgess, would you like to answer that question?
I think there's some confusion. The 43 residential units do not exit onto Veterans Road. There are 12 units that enter and exit onto Veterans Road. The remainder of the units will be in this building.
Okay.
In this 12-unit building, there are 33 parking spaces.
12 units, 33 parking spaces?
33 parking spaces. So we're required to have two spaces per unit, would only be 24, so we've got some excess parking for guests or folks with more than two cars.
Could I, just to understand, those two buildings, you said, had the rest of the residential? Are they sort of like two-story with commercial on the bottom, or?
Yes. The concept is. The residential units would be on the top floor, and then your storefronts would be on the bottom. So they're like a mixed, mixed-use type building.
So just, just, just to get you to repeat, exiting onto Veterans Road, there are?
12 units.
12 units?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know that, if those are one, two, three-bedroom units, or has that been decided yet?
I don't believe it's been confirmed, but I believe they are two-bedroom units.
Okay.
And the, the owner of the property is, is going to retain ownership?
That's right.
So they're not, they're not condos, they're apartments?
Well, the condominium units will be sold. So, but he's going to maintain ownership of all of the commercial space, and he will lease that space out. Condominium units will be sold.
Only these 12 over here, are, are that, is that all residential over there? There's no commercial component?
That's right. That's all residential over there.
And are those going to be sold as condos, or is he going to keep them?
They will likely be sold as condos.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this island? Yes, sir?
I, I don't care, so I'm going to swear in.
That's fine. Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Sal Chui, I live on Whispering Lake as well.
Can you spell your last name first?
It's spelled C-U-I-L-L-I. I live on Whispering Lake as well. So, yeah, my only main concern was just the access off of Veterans Road. It looks like there's only going to be 12 units there, two bedrooms each. I'm just curious, the type of apartment complexes on that, is it going to be something like a Paramar model, or just maybe like the ones on Hunter Road, or is it like an upscale-type apartment complex, or?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, basically, these, these drawings give you an idea of the architecture of the, of the plaza, and the architecture of the, these units will be made to match these. So they'll be, they'll be, they're not going to be what you think of whenever you think of townhome or, or those type of units. They're, they're going to be nicer-looking units that actually comply with the scenic corridor colors and materials and so forth, even though that particular building is not on the scenic corridor, it's outside of the distance of the scenic corridor.
Okay, and is that like, is it a two-story building, or?
It's a two-story.
Two-story building, okay. And then the last thing, or one of the last things, there, there's no vehicle access from the shopping plaza to that particular 12-unit building?
Right.
That's the only access?
We looked at connecting that, but the, again, cost to benefit of permitting through the wetlands and impacting the wetlands just to have a vehicle access there, whatever you've got Veterans Road here, just kind of didn't make sense. It would have made the development more cohesive to do that, if the impact of the wetlands just wasn't there.
Okay. Is, is that something that, after that development is built, is that something that could be modified at a later date where they can have access through that?
They have to come back.
They have to come back for that, okay. And then, um, the last thing was, as far as 98 goes here, I, I see that, you know, the access to this commercial stuff and the other residential is going to be off of 98. How is that, how is that access going to be permitted there? Are they putting a turning lane in? Are they planning on doing some lights or traffic lights, like?
As soon as you get done, we'll let Mr. Burgess answer all your questions at one time.
Yeah, so that's my other concern I had. And then that was all I had.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Burgess?
Access to 98, we have permitted a turn lane into main entrance. So there will be a right-hand turn lane coming into the main access and the boulevard of the development.
Okay.
The cut, the cut to go on the, to the other side is to the west?
Yes, going west, you will not be able to turn left. You have to go to the west.
Go down and turn.
In order to go east. Unfortunately, everybody wants a cut, but.
Nobody gets one.
Well.
You can't have that many.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this island? Okay, we'll close public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is number five, Shops at 393. It's formerly known as the HBC Mixed Use Development. This is a request to approve by final order. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown, and he'll introduce this one.
Good evening. Tim Brown with Planning and Development. I was not sworn.
Oh, okay.
I was out of the room.
That's fine. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
This is a major development or application requesting approval to develop 128 apartments, 21,242 square feet of commercial space, and 5,575 square foot of office slash amenity area with associated infrastructure on 15.06 acres with, with a future land use of VMU. It's located on the west side of North County Road 393, north of Highway 98, and south of Newitt Lane. This was approved by the Design Review Board at their meeting on April 5th, 7-0 vote with one condition. They wanted to limit the foot candle for the lighting at the northeast corner of the northwest building. Because there's what, eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight? Eight apartment buildings. This has a proportionate fair share requirement of $98,180, sidewalk buyout of $11,490. Then it has some various fire permitting and floodplain conditions, and unless evidence is presented to the contrary, it's consistent with the Land Development Code and the Conference of Plan. I'll answer any questions you may have, and I'd like to enter my staff report into evidence.
That's accepted. Do you have any questions for staff right now?
Also, this is connected to the SEFCO, which is under construction. It's, it's basically an out parcel, but they do have cross-access between the two.
SEFCO's the out parcel?
Yeah.
Yeah, right on the corner?
Here's the, they have access to the boulevard entrance here, off of 393, but they also can enter it off of Highway 98 as well. And you're going to have a right turn lane, right? Right turn lane off of Highway 98.
Cool.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. I did not get sworn in.
Oh, okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering, here representing the project, Shops at 393. As you can see, this property, just to orient you, is 393 here, US 98 here. Again, this is the SEFCO partial that's under development right now. We went through this process six months ago or so. The project has gone through Design Review Board and met all their requirements, as Tim stated. It consists of apartment buildings that are located along this north portion, 128 units total. It has 21,000 square feet of commercial use along the south. The access points are actually on 393 here and US 98 here, so the connectivity between the two and circulation. This was a requirement of the private department to have two access points to the number of units. And it makes sense. The SEFCO partial also connects through to this roadway and has right in, right out on US 98 only. As part of this development, I will go ahead and tell you, we've met with DOT already, and they will be required to extend the left turn lane, which turns north onto 393, as part of this, and they will be doing the right turn lane into the property at this location. So they'll have those that are, that will be required by DOT, just to put it out there. Just to give you a highlight, just generally, because we, you know, we talked earlier during the land use changes about future, future land use designations. This is village mixed use. It allows up to 12 units per acre. So, and we are well below that. This, this property actually, and we're not asking for a land use change, so, and doing much less than what they could. The property actually was previously approved as a project called Pascal's PUD, and that project was probably about twice as dense as this. It was, it was much more dense. New owner who wanted to do something different. One of the things that I would point out is the commercial space is one-story. The maximum height on all of the apartments is two-story. They wanted to do something like Kristen was talking about earlier, that me, that kind of matches the massing of the area there. I will point out this a little bit, because as always, a point of discussion, the storm management on the property. Here, we have two pretty large wet ponds proposed here and here, and kind of a master stormwater system. We did design it to attenuate the 25 and the 100-year storm warning, so we're kind of going above and beyond there. And it, and it seems to work really well in this area. I have talked to one resident who, who was here tonight, and I believe he's going to speak, but I did want to get it on the record that, that he had requested, he owns this property on Newitt up here. He had asked if we would consider moving the dumpster locations, which we do not have a problem with. We'll relocate them to some other parking spaces and just swap them out, if you guys are okay with that. He also had some questions about some improvements on Newitt, which I'm kind of working with Stephanie at District Fire Department, that have a whole lot to do with this, but we're trying to help him with that as we move forward. And then, other than that, this is kind of the boundary of the apartment buildings, so that you can take a look at that area. So it's limited to two stories, pretty low-impact design, even though it's 15 acres. Again, I would just point out, we're at an impervious surface ratio of about 50%, a little less than that, on the property. We're doing over and above for the stormwater management, and they're making a lot of improvements to the transportation system to try to address any traffic concerns, and I'll just be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Commissioners? Don't let him off that easy.
Don't worry.
Bring her last name.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up to public comments. And we have Claudia Bowen.
B-O-W-E-N.
You were sworn in?
Um, I was not sworn in. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll provide to this board will be the truth?
I do. And I will limit my speech to three minutes, as long as, if they develop, they will limit the construction noise and inconvenience of the traffic to three minutes as well. I live in Church Street Village, which backs up to this. I received a letter in the mail, because this development will be within 300 feet of my property, which is a single-family home, which I paid a good bit of amount of money for. My parents also have a home in this subdivision. It was built by Huff Brothers. They've now sold, I think, all the homes in our subdivision, and it was a disappointment that they did not reveal this information to us when we purchased our homes, so I feel like we're sort of getting it stuck to us. However, I do know that there will be all quality apartments behind us, if we have to have apartments go behind us, but it seems like there are a lot of apartments going back there. I have the same concerns as the Hunter's Lane residents, so I won't go through all that, but they're the exact same concerns. It's too many people, too small amount of property. Granted, they're not putting quite as many, but I'm still going to have 128 apartments in my backyard. All the trees have pretty much been clear-cut already. They did agree to reduce the lighting, but I think earlier in the planning phase, they were saying they would also put some either tall shrubbery or trees as a partition. I don't know if that needs to be addressed here or not, but, and the dumpster that he said he was going to remove, move, I hope they don't move it to directly behind my house, because the trucks, whenever they back up, they beep, and they usually come around 5:30, 6:00 in the morning on 393, because I can hear them from my house. Also, on 393, no one seems to have brought up the traffic problem, and that there's a fire station at the end of 393, well, halfway down 393, and their only access to 98 is that road, and right now it's two-lane, and they can barely get there as it is. And there's a wreck at the corner of 393 and 98 at least every Friday, around the time that people go to work and when school gets out. I usually end up having to go the back way and go check Holly to get everyone coast, because I can't pull out onto 98, because there's been a wreck. I have pictures of like 25 to 30 cars backed up. I have pictures of like 25 to 30 cars backed up. I've sat through four to five red lights, just trying to get from 98 over 393 to the other side. The traffic is horrendous. I don't know why there's so much development. I know people want to make a profit, but Walton County's just growing too quickly. It's turning into Atlanta. The TDC needs to change the sign to "Welcome to Atlanta" instead of "Welcome to Walton County," because it's changed a lot in 10 years. But my concern is, my property being divested, and the quality of the people that are gonna be living in the apartments, and I don't think they'll be purchasing the apartments, I think they're gonna be renters.
Are some of them renters?
No, but renters don't seem to care as much as property owners. That's my point. We don't have, the renters in our neighborhood are long-term renters, not short-term. That's the thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan Foglia? Did I say that right?
I was sworn in. I'm not against progress unless it affects me adversely. And I'm not a speaker, so I'm gonna use some notes. I'd like to point out that the powers that be have raised the elevation on Route 98 when they redid it. They've raised the elevation on 393 when they redid it. They've raised the elevation on Church Road Development to 15.5. Newitt Lane is presently at 12.6 elevation. I own two lots on Newitt Lane, which back up to this development. My lot is at 13.4 feet. The development is going to raise the level to 19.6 feet. That's gonna put me in a heck of a hole. You can't read the elevation on the small drawing that they sent. I even tried with a magnifying glass. This is a small point, but if they could have increased the font three times and still been within the footprint of the building, make it a little more legible. That's a small matter. I just thought I'd mention that. I spoke to the county, and they claim that they hope to pave Newitt Lane within the next year. If you've got a big development to have a dirt road directly behind it, that doesn't look well to me. However, you've got a bad situation there, because what you've done, and the point that I was trying to make about these elevations, is you've bracketed this property in on all four sides with higher elevations. The water can't drain, hasn't been able to drain. Every time it rained, it used to turn to soup. One of the gentlemen from the road department finally came out, looked at it. They came out and they put down this ground asphalt. 85, 90 percent improvement on the road. They placed a culvert in. Unfortunately, the culvert's too high. Water can't get, can't jump up to drain. So, something needs to be done there. I understand that they're gonna have a retention pond, and I had a very pleasant meeting with Mr. Jenkins, and we discussed some of this. They mentioned the possibility of putting a drain in on the corner of my property to handle any excess that may be there. I'd like to have that put in the record, because if we don't, and I'm affected adversely, I don't have anything to stand on. I don't know if I got anything to stand on as it is, but... There is a swamp there with stagnant water, pond scum, and I don't understand how mosquito control has let that continue to exist. It should be filled in. The, another big point is, all this land between 98 and Newitt Lane, with the exception of the lots on Newitt Lane, everything is VMU. My two lots, I believe, are residential preservation one. To put me down in a six-and-a-half-foot hole, and then I can't fill it in and recoup the cost of it at a single-family dwelling. So I think that should be addressed also. And I understand this is about your development, but what you develop here affects me, and the drainage and the inability to fill that economically is not there. So I think we need to consider that in this project. You've raised the level at a pump station when they rebuilt it here, oh, what, approximately six, eight months ago? You've raised the level at a two-out developments that are going in on those stores on the corner. And I'll try to wind up here in a second. The non-pervious surfaces are estimated to be 67 percent. Where's all this water gonna go? You're gonna have all of this now. I understand that it's sloped toward the reservation, the pond. But I just hope that this isn't gonna filter through to my, I don't want to beat a retention pond for this development. So I have grave concerns about this, and I understand that South Walton wants to move forward. I had a comment about the trash bins, but you've already heard about that. They're directly behind my lot. And in closing, I want to point something out. I also own another lot on Cox Road. When they put the Harrisat development in, there was no mention of elevation at the public hearing. When it was finally approved, and they started putting in the infrastructure, we drove down, and here's Manhole Coat sitting up two feet above the road. When they put the road in, they raised the road. They wanted it at the same level as Chet Holly. Well, now, I'm down in a hole on Cox Road. When I hooked up to the sewer line, because they put the sewers in, I had to put in a lift station. Not only did I have to put the lift station in for a couple of inches, but I had to put a grinder in. The grinder costs eight bucks a month. Nobody else in the development has to have a grinder. So this is a serious matter to me, and this is the second time that I'm being faced with this. So I thank you for your consideration, gentlemen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Jenkins, you wanna answer a couple of those questions?
Yeah, I've met with Mr. Foglia, and he is right, I forgot to mention the fact that that drain connection, we have a drain that runs in the back, that we will have availability for him to connect to there.
I just wanted to point out, the seal condition, and we talked about this a little bit, right now, everything pretty much drains to the north through this area, kind of goes, and there's a mosquito control ditch that runs along this boundary and continues on to the north to the bay. The reason that we're filling the way that we are is actually to get the water to reverse and go to our pond area here. So we're actually keeping, we're continuing to run like toward Newitt Lane and that area, and actually gonna take care of the stagnant water and things like that with this development, and take it back to the south for these new pond areas. After attenuation, the 100-year bend, it will pop off to the ditch, the existing ditch that's over here, but not until it's attenuated. It should make a tremendous improvement to that area, actually. Again, want to add that we, you know, it's okay with you guys, we're more than willing to relocate the dumpster. It will not be adjacent to the same family residential. It will be closer to the Dollar General that's located here now.
And then, just to, let's see, address a couple of other things. There was mention of the fire station. They are part of the technical review of this, and they did review it, and they actually requested a few changes, and we've satisfied those guys with that. But then, again, just to point out, this is village mixed use. This is the highest intensity land use that the county has. This is very less intense than what it could be. You don't want to throw that out there too often, but it is very less intense. We have, we could do 12 units per acre there, about eight and a half. We could do a floor-to-air ratio of 2.0, which is a lot. We're at .25 on the property. Impervious surface would be allowed to be 85 percent, and we're a little under 50 percent here, so. I think, and then parking, I just did want to address that, too. The parking calculation, we have about 40 additional parking spaces over what would typically be required, because we do know parking is a concern here, too. But, yes, sir?
Do you agree with the numbers that he used on how much higher your elevation would be and how much lower his?
Um, I think it's pretty close, actually. I think he's probably pretty close. I don't know exactly what the elevations are on his lot there, but yeah, he's close with our finished floor elevation, some of them.
Do you know how big those lots are?
The ones on Newitt?
No, his lots. How, do you know?
They, these are the lots, new additions here. I think there's probably a home this lot and this lot, and I don't know how deep they are, but...
They're 199 for the both of them on Newitt by 150.
Okay.
So you're raising the elevation about six feet?
It's to change the water to the south instead of the north. Yes, we're raising, we're actually raising, the top of the retaining wall area will be about four feet, probably, but then the finished floor elevations are a little higher, but we catch everything within the parking areas and take it back to the south here.
It should significantly improve what they're doing.
It should significantly.
So that's for your drainage issue?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What's the commercial element supposed to be?
It's different uses. We actually designed it for what would be considered shopping centers. We did one for 200 for the parking. So I anticipate, I think they anticipate some retail, possibly a bank location in there, possibly a cafe, something like that. It'll be a niche for different retail uses.
And all that's in those front two buildings?
Yes, all that is in these front two.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comments. Commissioners, any comments, questions, concerns, motions? I think it's a very responsible development. I understand the concern of people who live around there, but it's well within requirements and under requirements.
So you're waiting for a motion?
Waiting for a motion, or something.
A motion to approve.
We have a motion, and a second?
With conditions. Yeah, if I get you to add in just moving the dumpster, so no question, we got that and that. Do we need to add in, attach?
Drain.
His drain? Okay, dumpster.
And the lighting?
Lighting's already ended.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. Both changes are okay with the motion and the second? Public comments are closed. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more items we got?
We got two items left. Number six, the Verizon Wireless Santa Rosa relocation, request to approve by final order. Renee Bradley will introduce it.
Give them about a minute, yeah.
Well, there's a lot for that, and not many people talk.
Wow. Okay, Renee.
Thank you. Verizon Wireless is requesting approval to construct 150-foot monopole cell tower on a 75 by 45-foot track of leased area on a two-and-a-half-acre track. The parcel's located within public facilities land use, and it located at 20 C. Croft Drive. This is the regional utility site in which the original tower was taken down, in which these antennas came off of. So this is a replacement tower in which the other antennas that we also did temporary towers on will be able to get located to. I did want to add one condition that came in after the staff report came out from the South Walton Fire District, in which the access must be 15-foot, as well as be constructed for the weight of the apparatus, the emergency apparatus, and we'd like to get that condition entered into the record.
Okay.
We've already formalized the final order and added that as part of the conditions for when this goes to the VCC, and I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, you said the weight of the apparatus. You talking about the fire truck?
Yes. Be constructed so that it can hold the apparatus.
My full sink.
Okay. Just wondering, how often do those things catch fire?
Well, they're heavy.
No, not the fire truck.
The cell tower, well, you gotta remember, too, you know, we are on the regional utility side. There's more out there than just the cell tower. Now, I wouldn't expect a cell tower to catch on fire, but we still gotta have proper access in case it does.
Mostly metal pole, and then, of course, they could hit by lightning and catch fire, I guess.
And there's cabinets, electrical cabinets and stuff at the bottom for equipment.
Anybody here with an applicant?
Bob Chopra, previously been sworn in. Sam Inc., agents for Verizon Wireless. We concur with staff's report. The temporary tower we received approval on last summer when we were in front of this board, that's up, and that's been on there for the past few months. The water tower came down, Regional Utilities took down the water tower in the past month, so that site is graded, there's nothing there anymore. So if we receive approval on this permanent tower site, we can take the temporary site off air. Once this is constructed, then there's other tenants as well that'll join this permanent tower site and provide coverage to South Walton.
Thank you. Any questions we have here? Don't see any? Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the public comments. Does anybody wish to address this item? Don't see none, so we'll close the public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now we'll move to God's Country. North County, this is a Dollar General, request to approve by final order. It's gonna be located at the intersection of North State Road 83 and County Highway 1883, just south of the Tenlake Estates subdivision. Renee Bradley has reviewed it, and she will introduce it.
Before I start, let me enter the staff report to records, because all my buddies are getting on my case, and I keep forgetting this, so may I please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a major development order application submitted by Bell Engineering Services on behalf of Terramore Development, requesting approval to develop a 9,182-square-foot commercial building on a 1.88 acres of future land use of general agriculture. At the time that this was advertised, this is actually commercial now. We came through here and went and did a small-scale amendment to change this. We've also did a lot split on this development to cut out the commercial piece. The project's located on southeast corner of State Road 83 and County Highway 1883, and it's identified by the parcel number in your packet. We don't have any outstanding comments other than standard getting permits for conditions, and I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Commissioners?
The ingress, negress is on 1883?
It is, sir. And that was a request by DOT. From my understanding, they didn't want the access to Bell 83. They've also added a fire hydrant on their side of the road on 83 to comply with safety.
Very good, thank you. Anybody here with an applicant?
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Bell. I have been sworn in. I don't really have anything else to add. I can answer questions if you have some.
Commissioners, any questions we have here?
How long is it gonna take you?
How long's it gonna take you?
Well, they're ready to get started, so it's up to you.
As soon as you get through the process, right?
Building permits, next, huh?
Yeah, we have all the other permits, other than the DOT utility permit, so we're almost to the finish line on this one.
Very good. How about we put a condition on this one, that you expand the one I'm obviously had to make it super Dollar General? I'm just kidding, of course, but I just want to throw that out there.
It's a Dollar General plus, I think they actually sell produce.
Are y'all doing the one in Paxton, too?
Yes.
We need both of them.
Speed them up.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Commissioners, what's your? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And I believe that's the last thing we got, is Mr. Carpenter? We will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much, staff. You did a great job.